Yes.
Call the word six oh one. There's everybody giving that regular meeting. It was going to be successful, be held Tuesday, the tenth day of January, five point three at six P M. The town is going to be the, it's going to be seven. It's just five, one, two, seven, one or more members of the town council may attend the state media figure conference. The former town council president has been voting. All members of the town. Education pledge. Lords, thank for this opportunity to gather together. Wonderful community. Bless you, give us wisdom, grace, watch over all of the town posts. And those that serve protect this community day. Your name. As long as I'm in the United States.
Um, you can see it outlined in red, it's about four hundred and seventy-nine acres total. It runs the highway one hundred runs between both of the portions. And here you can kind of see US fish and wildlock land kind of adjacent to the property. Here's a zoomed in version of the boundaries of the property. Highway one hundred runs in the middle of both of those. Um, so the south, south probably one hundred is about four hundred and thirty acres. That's the one that we're kind of focusing on for the burn. Um, and then we also own the, it's almost fifty acres on the north side of highway one hundred. That abuts the Laguna Madre. Um. So we have a lot of reasons why we selected the property. Most of it is kind of conservation year, a lot of, most of our projects. We want to have a conservation outcome. We don't want to see it developing the houses. We want to see something conservation wise happen. And this property, the south boundary is the Laguna Adiscusso Wildlock Refuge. You have the South Dakota Tourism Center on the Northwest Boundary. And then the Southeast Boundary was recently acquired by the Conservation Fund. And I think that they have a similar conservation minded outcome for that property also. There's a lot of wildlife on the property, cavillinas, possibility for ocelots, arid fox, Texas porches. Um, there's some dense scrubby type vegetation along the highway that is good for ocelots. So those are green infrastructure kind of vision plan that Cameron County had come up with in twenty seventeen. And several of their ideas were kind of around the property. Um, they were, there's a railroad burn that gives to the property and they were looking at maybe enhancing that for the rails to trails program. Um, doing some kayak trails, it's gonna monitor a, um, just different and conservation type outcomes all throughout this area. And in general, this property can be used in the future to, for educational outreach programs. They can work with the, the city, we can work with the local schools, we can work with fire departments whenever we're doing the burning. All in all, it could be a really good educational outreach kind of thing where people can come and see the conservation that's happening on the property. So there's, there's some plans that we've kind of looking at that may be, that we think are good for this property based on what we've seen so far and what's out there. Um, so wetland banks are a mitigation type offset. Where they offset for any type of impacts that are done to wetlands on other portions of properties. That one's regulated by the US Army Corps of Engineers and the EPA. Conservation banks are similar, other than they offset for endangered species such as the ocelots or the black rails. Then there's also uh PRM, which are primary responsible solutions. Where they, it's similar to the bank, but they kind of come in and they are offsetting their impacts from whatever they're doing. Whether they are building a house on top of the wetlands, they can um and kind of mitigate that by putting wetlands on our property. So all of CEM, CEP's projects are really heavy in conservation literacy, community outreach. Almost every single one of our properties, we have people come out, whether it be the Texas Wildlife Association, the CMA Boston State University, any earth sheets, any local. Schools will come to the property then use them as they need to, to teach kids conservation, to teach them wildlife and about the outdoors. And we're trying to use the word like them using as an outdoor classroom type thing, the good way to learn and the good way to, for them to. See what's happening and what should be happening. Um, with that, do you have any questions? I didn't really touch on much of the money, but you want to get back to the, the boundary map? Yeah. Right there. So the property for the burn is going to likely be about southward in the four hundred and thirty acres. Um, we already have fire lanes put in, they're about twenty foot wide along the entire boundary. And there's some interior roads that would act as fire, but it's also, and there's, I think we have the double, it's probably forty feet around the strides. Kind of keep that fire from popping out.
Mr. Dan.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for taking the time to come and present this to us. Me definitely feel better knowing what your plans are, what is behind the company's name because you don't know just your brain. So thank you so much. Um, the other question I have, and that might just be not being originally from Texas, I want to hear some of the burning thing. And um, it, it's just scary for me to see such a big land. I know you guys done it before and that idea is stupid question for me, but it's important to me. What will happen to all the little crops when you burn?
So. You have a lot of different benefits for, for scrubber, such as increasing the diversity of the vegetation and then decreasing invasive species. When the wildlife that are on site, they just move with the fire like. They feel the heat coming and they just move to the other set of property. And the, we have, there's barbed wire fence on that south boundary, but they can still move in and out. I mean, there's no fence that's along the south of Laguna Adiscusso. So I've literally, we just burned, I mean, we've been, we've done several burns this year already on other properties. And you can literally like sit there and watch that fire kind of move through the, you know, plant plantation, but you can watch them move. And you'll just kind of see the rabbits come out of there and the snakes come out and the grasshoppers come out. It's, I mean, they move with it, they, they feel the heat and they're, they move. But it, it does increase the diversity of the vegetation there, which also increases the food for them to eat.
Mm-hmm. I was doing that, oh, well, maybe just seeing that some birds here. I guess what caught my attention was a particular brush there behind stripes.
Right.
Very kids, uh, and you can't walk it. Oh, no, try one thousand two hundred. You, you, you're still weak. And so that, that was a concern, concern being the burn that that much.
Alright, so. A lot of this, I'm trying to point. So this kind of area in here is very thick. It's stupid thick and honestly like we, we probably will end up putting a fire break around that. Only because like it's really good ocelot, how should they, they can see them, we don't want to, that's what their habitat is. If they need brush that we can't crawl through. And we don't want to take what ours in there where it's going to get rid of that habitat. So I mean, if we did burn it, we always look at the weather, we look at the relative humidity, we look at the wind. And we have those fire breaks and all that safety in place and we'll have water trucks out there if anything was to happen. And it, it shouldn't be a concern that. A big brush, like we've burned some stuff that is very, very, very thick. And you do have the, I guess that risk of something jumping out. But we do our best to look at the weather, we put the fire breaks in, we have water trucks on standby, make sure that that's not going to get out of where we want it to burn.
And so that is probably the problem. Uh, on five one hundred back there. That's the habitat that the National Wildlife Department is actively trying to recreate with their, their plantings throughout the property. Fire in the area. So I, I am concerned about leaving indigenous orange scrub habitat that, that is defined. Prime habitat for our, our critical endangered species in the area. Um, so, um, has there been any conversations of coordination with recent National Wildlife Refuge personnel? With this plan burning this property? And, and how this may fit in with a broader conservation plan for, for this critical endangered habitat?
Right, so we have had conversation with Brandon and Jonathan from Laguna Adiscusso. And they came to the property, we kind of walked around, looked at it with them. They discussed how they named the property. And so they do burn on Laguna Adiscusso, they burn a lot of the wood grass block. And with that, I mean, they recommended that we burn the property just to kind of cut down some of the wood grass block, get some of that diversity back in there. Um, but with the orange scrub, the way this property laid is all the way along highway one hundred, it's a higher elevation. That scrubby vegetation is on the upland side of the property. And then all of the wider stuff I can hear. So this is all uplands and that's uplands, but once you get into here, it's all lower. And then you come back to this friend that you have put on the Laguna Madre. All this will not grow this. Uh, due to that elevation. So. I just don't think that people will burn the scrub habitat or make certain burning on wetlands to increase that, that what's in there. And in forming this full wood grass flats in here. Um. We don't have a clear plan of what we're burning right now. But we will have a plan before we go out, obviously. Does it know where we want to put our fire breaks? If we need to put more fire breaks in, if we need to take that scrub, scrub, uh, we can put burn uh fire lane on that edge. Like that rubber at all, that's going to access the fire break if we were to go in there and come figure it out too.
This will be the existing fire break that was cut adjacent to highway one hundred and ten and surrounding the gas niche.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. That, that applied to these, that was the plan there.
Right. So we, we kind of, we had those plans, we most last, most implored about last year in like October, I think. And at that point, it was more of a, let's get this thing kind of open so we can actually drive around it because you can't really walk in it. But, and let's just kind of see what we can do. I mean, we knew that we wanted a fire break around the tracks. So with that fire break there, there's actually another little road that kind of goes. Basically a fire break around the tracks, you have some scrub scrub and then you have another fire, which you can't see from the soil with the roof. And that would basically give us a double buffer on that struts. So wherever those fire breaks are now, doesn't mean that's burning the entire one hundred and thirty acres. We're just going to burn what's needed.
So.
So we have a majority southeast of it. Okay, so. The majority of time you're burning there, the smoke will just be over the entire city. So I would hope that you would burn it on it north.
Right.
Straight east, which is rare, but. But it would just be horrible for our community to have that big of a fire burning over.
Right.
We're just, we have elderly pop populations, so it's not subject to the consideration.
Yes, sir, we do, we, we look at the relative humidity, make sure that we're burning under the correct conditions. So we're not having this high intensity fire blowing through there. We're going to try to burn it at a lower intensity. Now, we always look at the wind, which right now, I mean, probably never, we're not going to have a more clean until winter again, probably.
Ever.
Yeah, but we definitely take into consideration the wind and what, we don't just take a random two days and say, hey, we're going to go burn this day, no matter whether, no matter when. We always look at everything before we put fire on.
And that was also looking at just possibly in consideration that we're already water grasses. You know, where it's like, you know, throughout types and. I would just need to see that.
Yes, sir. And it may not even happen this year. I mean, the conditions may not even, I mean, I believe it may have to wait till February, February, February twenty-four.
Yep.
And I mean, one, one last one for you. Um, do you guys have any warning signs for the, also the, the lot in the lot of hundreds? For the wildlife, if they jump, that's where we are right now. Going on, can we make post event in the paper or something make everybody aware in the valley that. Because I think it won't, it will not just be the big animals, it will be one of the ones crawling across. You have anything in place for that?
So it's typical, whenever there's a scrub burn, we, for a fall, we always call the local fire department, let them know, hey, we're burning. Let the chief local sheriff know, local police department know that, say, we're going to scrub burn over here. If somebody calls, this is what happens. And then we always put up like smoke in the area, the scrub burning progress signs along roadways that are anywhere near the property. But I think that maybe put it in the paper or, but I don't know, put in a sign up somewhere saying like, hey, we're burning, we're thinking about burning on this day or this week. Be cautious to whenever you're grabbing, because I mean, that's a big highway.
Yeah. It's, it's just bad, it's like there was a fire and you know, it's a four by four residence, you know, and then they get scared. But if you don't know, it's.
Right, I mean, if y'all have other recommendations of how we can kind of let everybody know, like.
I think once we have a date, I'm sure you guys can put it in the news. Yeah, stuff like that. I just want to make sure that when people drive down from McAllen, who are not in social media and how I, yeah, yeah, yeah. That they still see that something is going on.
Did you go over?
Sounds like not sure exactly specific areas of everybody, right? Right?
The master plan, the survey got closed. And so what we're going to report you on are really the significant changes on from what she presented last month. They are thirty, thirty-nine, what should be in your pocket. And I'll let you tag it before.
So when we closed the survey, what we did is we looked at a survey that we looked at all of the we looked at the answers for kids. And we looked at the answers for people forty-five and older. Because your average age, your population's average age is fifty-eight. So the entire ages are moving in. You need to know about that same ten years ago. So in ten years, your average age has increased by twenty-five. So you need to be aware of that. We looked at all three, the young kids, the the older generation that represents your population, and overall everybody. And so we made sure they were surprisingly similar. It's like young kids actually scored people all very far. But so what we did is we looked at those everybody who's fairly similar on the outdoor priority and then the administrative priority. That that way probably weighted your city's resources and that sort of thing. And what you've always got are works, very heavy, very priority. Plus, things like PDA is required, so of course that's a priority. So really, the outdoor priorities are low. Now, they're not the only them all. They looked at sources, what you've had already. So and that was weighted the most heavily. And then looked at the survey responses. Now, trails and benches were rated very highly across the board. Everybody wants trails and benches. They want they want a trail. And postal access. Then we went with pet friendly, pet friendly areas. I think the dog park was number one. But it ranked very highly throughout. Green open spaces, so play areas. We combined some things. The green open space was one survey response. And the play areas, the play area is another five. They were all like playgrounds, like very high same pretty good every month as well. That was that. That was very good. Facilities, exercise equipment, rest spots and fields. So we combined all of the support parts. The tennis, the football fields, baseball. Get a native park, a school park, splash pads and sea port. It's not your high priority for the people. But but it didn't really like how we put that. So those are the priorities. And that's how we got any questions, any well, I think we ought to put else in there then.
The beauty of it, it was just a little thing for me that it was really important. What I heard from residents, I talked about about trash cans throughout the town. And I really haven't specifically seen it in there, but I'm sure it's connected to another area, I think.
Well, it's not specifically listed, it would be under you could greens, whatever you expect, or or mountains would include trash. But if you would prefer, we could actually add a number twelve there that specifically say trash cans in our
Well, for me, I personally think we need trash cans to the city, but not just in the park. So when I walk my dog, I have my legs with me, or if I don't, it comes to the city. But really, if you go down which part of it, the park is allowed chance to throw your feedback away, so you end up at the library. And people don't do it. And, you know, shouldn't be throwing somebody's personal trash container out there. So even if you go down this scheme, there was nothing. Except on highness, this again, the tangible apartment. So I I think if we want to make sure that property that ours, we need to give them the tools that they don't. Well, we can put one right at the walkway for the orange trailer. And I'm sure I personally would give an easement on my property for the trash. And I think there will be more residents who would all of that.
So like trash cans or dog station?
Trash. I think if I had a choice, I would say both. But I know we won't. So I think it's more important to have trash cans because I hope every responsible dog owner has their own bags with them. But then to be able to discard them and not throwing them on the brush pile or in the ditch. Because not everybody uses a credible plastic bag, so.
Now, some of that can be that we prioritize the pet friendly areas and so much. The bags of that. Collect that. But I guess my question is, if you want to, and this is for parks, but we could put trash cans as a priority. I mean, the one who exists alone, I don't know how important it is to everybody else.
Plastic trash, people throwing away stuff that will end up here.
We moved to the to the trash cans that were at sports park. We put one at the entrance on both entrances of the walkway.
The question also is the ones, the concrete ones, we have to apologize. Yes, like we have few in the park. Everybody sitting down there.
Thank you. Really nice to see how the park evolved and how the in your experience with with this, other locales, with what we now have on trial here. This is a quick ball, but does this seem like a fundable list of debt which the outside source group can go after now?
When Randy and I were going through this, we were looking at this with an eye toward square or anything. Say, what do you with that expansion? And a lot of things, for instance, trails and benches, those are priorities that we've been working for in very much. So, you know, we're definitely looking at not only what we want, which is of course what we want to drive, but how will that tell, how will that guide where the city wants to go? So, yeah, that was that was a primary drive. And I think with this list, I think you've got you've got a generic list that, you know, builds almost any type of and you so, yeah, I think that this priorities will give you what you want. And then on the following page, the implementation timeline, what we did is prioritize they have roll out our business. And then in the long term, some trails, some, we're going to be so long, future trails. We didn't want to put too much into implementing. There are limits, should what so we wanted to look at what was what we were getting from, not only council, the general public. And these are the priorities, the implementation priorities. Again, I think that, you know, we've got some totally other idea. We need to get that in. But otherwise, these would be the these would be projects that we do that was looking at and priority was certainly.
We're pretty much done with the master plan. The next step is
by grant.
By the grant. Exactly. And so and when is that?
That could be long. So is the project?
When do you need that project?
Yesterday. But, yeah, I know that there's a screenplay and there are business committees. And I would work here beside.
Pretty much, it looks like it is what it is.
Yeah.
I don't see any improvement. Especially obvious first.
Yeah.
Okay. And so this is my humble opinion. I think we should use what we have now and put it in and enhance and improve what we have. Since everything else is pie in the sky and obvious versus nothing will be figured out by then.
Well, I mean, there is some place. But, yeah, I would urge
we want to be first on this. We want everything buttoned up, be first, everything there. So we don't miss out on the solid charities. We took a big step by hiring you to get this done. And, you know, I think it was very impressive. And so we're looking forward to fully doing this. So thank you so much.
Yeah. So I'm okay, because then I would
I made much to adopt in twenty twenty-three, two oh three. Yeah, agreeing with twenty twenty-three, that charter plan. Wasn't made by Mayor Carter, seven by Council without dollars. Will prove the twenty twenty-three forthcoming. Yes. Number four, financial reports. Computer monthly financial reports.
So we have our financial once we have the first take and then on the movement of revenue and finishers. We have a separate parent account sheet. And that will run a little bit more squirrel out some aspects, some of that or in month six. So we're running at half a year, so every be sponsored around fifty percent collected. The most disattractive are in the each collect that are ready to this point. We'll get some tripling in over the last month, but we do give them a feeling by now. So.
My gun, like taxes.
Right.
Ninety-seven percent. My partner does good. Anything else best? All right. We want to number five, capital outlay of funds. The responsible action regarding twenty of these budget items.
So we put this on the agenda, so I get to speak with everyone about the status of our capital outlay items. We approved free capital outlay item, budget line item. The first one was in the general fund. We approved building storage units for our storage of all of our onsite storage for all of our page storage units. So what ended up happening was the concrete slab cost about ten thousand dollars. And so that looked as nine thousand dollars by what originally we're going to do the iconic storage boxes. However, we were able to arrest a metal storage building that gave us over double the square footage. Plus, it gave us the ability to put a loft area in so we can store all the paper documents up on the loft and the equipment on the bottom. So this storage unit will eliminate the three storage units that we're paying a monthly fee on. So we did fall short from the capital outlay fund, but we were able to find a difference within the general between the department's contract services that budgeted for the monthly payments of the storage unit that will no more be using. We were able to allocate those funds to finish up paying the storage. And we're probably, I think, one storage unit data and we're hopefully getting out of all three of them by the first. That's the goal. There are a lot of things we restore that make no sense on my work story. A lot of, you know how storage units are, right? It gets pushed in, but back, so tell what works. Really hard about being all that over. So okay, so the next capital outlet item was for the it's a vehicle. The place that ordered for the vehicle on October second. And it was usually delivered about the January, February, September. We had a third and our car that that factored yet, it weren't sold on microchips to make the car. So it's been ordered, but it has not been received. You'll notice that you approved fifty thousand dollars for that couple of items. The purchase orders, that is for fifty-five thousand ninety-nine. It is coming up with the difference out of this general budget. Okay, the third oh, I'm sorry, you guys approved for capital outlets. I forgot about the private purchase. There is a fire department capital outlet budget for the air compressors. You'll see that you budgeted forty-two thousand. You bought the breathing air compressor and it came out to forty-one thousand. And you spotted that those happen. And then you can avoid your metro fire for all of that. And then the last capital outlet I thought was approved was for public works for public equipment. Manny is getting his head around everything that we have going through storage. She's trying to get a game plan together about what she wants to spend that money on. And making sure it's the most basic, but there's a couple pieces of equipment that we're likely looking at that will cost more than the fourteen thousand. So you will probably see some of the council proposal, either increase capital fund or approach and kind of get it. There's a couple of different pieces that maybe you're looking at, but we couldn't have that better prepared for us for May. But he was, I was giving him two or three months to get figured out what he needs, what equipment we have, what's fixable, not fixable to make those decisions.
Great idea. You evaluate. Very good. Move on to number six, ARCA funds.
Okay. So the first thing that you'll find is time number six. This is the main record statement of the ARCA fund. It's actually what's sitting in there right now states. Remember, we have to buy the right of the ARCA, have a separate check. So it's why it's so oh, I think you have without such a free plan for that. The next page is the summary of has a past three resolutions, but the actual expense and the difference. So this will kind of help give you guys an idea of what's your real estimated budget amount is. The street improvement, that sort of commitment. Unless there's another bill that comes in, didn't cost us. We had budgeted thirty-three or they quoted us that was just short thirty-three thousand. Looks like at the right now, it's beginning at twenty-two thousand, but actually that's eleven thousand. The vector machine was cheaper than we had budgeted, same with the the vector or the building code of course is going to be beautiful. So that gave us a difference of four thousand eight ninety-five. He just filed a quarterly report yesterday. Actually, the grant work, everybody was here yesterday, filed the quarterly report. And for this with the ARCA. So I just want to bring you September seventh, but just at the bottom, you probably lose twenty twenty-three, that's not have approved. We back on resolution twenty twenty-two dash seventeen, we approved the police body cameras for ninety-five thousand four hundred dollars. That quote at this point is over your old. So obviously, you know, prices go up. So when you put the request for bid out, the quote came in for a hundred and thousand change. So I a resolution that will that approval now by fifteen thousand hundred dollars, which will still put us about the same where we were at, because we had to spend the difference that we had spent about fourteen thousand.
Okay, my question is, we're six months into the year. We have approved all these projects. And none have been done.
Well, so let me let me touch on that next.
Just wait a second.
Okay.
Library, what weather stripping was said that it was very important just to build it. Okay, and hasn't been done. Library computers, everybody was around about that. That's just the computer. The tough looks. Cloud storage. These are from twenty twenty-two. And I'm just curious why they couldn't do that.
Okay, so the process to get this the grant writers have to write, they have to be sure for bid, they have to go out, they have to be posted. The vehicles have gone, both the vehicle and the fire department people have both been posted for bid. No response given. I went to the co-op over at the Texas Smart Buy. I requested bids for the people there. It's not, we still haven't received a response for the bid. So the weather stripping, we're having to find three places that will comfortably give us the there's just a lot more groups for the federal spending, the federal money. So we are, we are moving down the line, the computers. I put a pause on that one. We had gotten the computers that that would have got from the grants and the ones that the friends of the library had purchased. So given the amount of paperwork and and work it takes to do each one of the purchases, I was trying to get the bigger ticket items to be fair at first. The weather stripping is one that we are actually working on. It is going to be rising the petition for bids next on that one. So that's, that's where we're at. The tough hopes and the cloud storage are the same thing. We just have to do the bid. So they they should start coming faster. It's just they're just slower response market, but that's where we're at. Well, but that's not for lack of trying. It's that the vendors aren't responding to the bid. For the for the police body cameras that we have to bid for, that'll be on the if that item, we only have one vendor respond. No, we don't have to have three. We just have to have one. I mean, so like right now, the only one that responded is the one that we're going to recommend that that we approved. So but like I said, for the fire department people, there was no response to the information for bid and place in newspaper and did that route. So we got went through the Texas Smart Buy, which is also known as the co-op purchasing, which is that approved and to purchase. And I found the contract for that, that we can email them and ask them for bid. And I emailed the typical vendors that we get, it'll be all of those two, three, five folks. And I haven't received one response. So I have to have one, but I don't have to have three, as long as we solicit three or solicit however many, you know, that that's fine. Solicit everybody.
I mean, of course, it would be for a little bit. Just to, you know, be able to have a lot of
bigger ones. But with the littler ones, you don't, you know.
We have the
building code enforcement. And then the other ones, like the tough look for those, some of those depended a little bit upon getting actual body cameras. So we got the right, the top's the right equipment. So that was better because that started the tough looks for the police and how we pictured the contract for the body camera.
Is that where that in the audit, there's to be a two hundred we're going to spend all this.
It is okay, because we still have a lot of days of breaks.
I know, I just wanted to just make clear on that.
Yes.
Yes, it is. Compared will be a question. I would just hope that we kind of move on these things a little bit faster. Number seven, resolution point twenty-three dash ten, considering the possible action for the point twenty-three oh nine. And landing in a book reading when this is point twenty-two eleven, point twenty-two seventeen, point twenty-three oh three.
So this is just incorporating all of the actual events that we've approved before. So it proves that the amount that you can realize where what your work went. So it doesn't increase that number six for the body camera. They can get to the ninety-five four to the hundred and one thousand. But this is everything you guys have approved with it, but the actual whole set. But this is everything you guys have approved with it, but the actual whole six.
What's the difference between a four sixty seven and three four and three thirty four? I'm very proud of this.
Oh, wait, okay. So, so the three thirty four is what is left to allocate. The four sixty seven is what you. That means the three thirty four is what you guys have left. Four sixty seven, that is what you guys. You can pull out that.
We saw three hundred and thirty four thousand dollars.
That's standard.
Left the art of funds.
So we're still waiting on the P P A in here. We're still trying to get that in here to report them. So.
Do we have till twenty four to?
To designate and then. Or I tell you. But you know, I think that I'm going to have you guys designate or pretend that are during the. Next. Not funny, but. I don't remember the month it will be, but I can sign that for you guys. But twenty twenty four to designate twenty twenty six to complete and spend all of them.
Do I have an option? You have a question? Looking, looking. Made by.
Where's Ramar?
Yes.
Number Gonzalez? Number take avail?
Yes.
And I have number seven, resolution point twenty three dash ten, consideration possible. Yeah. You did that. Number eight, resolution point twenty three eleven, consideration possible action to approve resolution twenty twenty three dash ten, pointing our. Did twenty three oh eight, police body cameras and conducted electrical weapons.
So this is what I was referring to before. We got the bid in for the body worn cameras and the electrical weapons also from the Caesars. The bid came in, people bid, it came in for an amount of a hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and twenty one dollars. Chief David and I looked over the package. It is what we asked for in substitution. And so we are recommending that approve the Axon bid for the diet.
Really, I mean, by this, well, this is a job that you have everybody a chance to get. Well, naturally, they're really going to talk. No? Not should be exactly, you should have a valid second by commission, commissioner, fail. Through resolution twenty point three eleven.
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember DeKalbale?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Number ten.
So these body terms, once the officer is out and about, is there a regulation going to be have to be turned on? Or turned off or you say there are any such regulation?
Yes. I don't know, every day I'll put, stop your mouth. But any, one of the things I'm going to have. But if it's any, any interaction on a planning traffic stop, every traffic stop, that's. Some reason I'm unconscious and it doesn't come off, if you have to write a report and explain why you did not. Number ten, ordinance point twenty three oh two, consideration possible action on second meeting regret town of this city of ground litigation.
Yes, mayor, councilor, it's a secondary, we wanted to finally confirm the reach of mediation. And so now, nothing to report. I don't have the final copy that we're intended to attach. Well, about a formal way doesn't that find fancy. You have the map that that's essentially the sense mark, what the, what the area that you, that you want. It's, and that's what we include together. I, I don't see that, and it's not, again, not from the life of our council on this, I mean, the other side of the. I don't see that as a dependent to our passing this ordinance. Like, everybody understands what file set of the shares we have, Apple shows those, flat map that gets attached to it. We're going to have to subsequently equate to that it wasn't. So, so I'm still recommending that we approve this ordinance on second. I know Brown's will have to. And so just to, just to finalize this. If we did, we got. Produce payments and engineer calling fantasy. Must equate to. All right. More as well. That's approved. I, I don't, there, I, I've not seen. Whether they had took this before then or if it's somebody or somebody. I haven't heard from Allen Council members if there was any problem. The. Yeah.
Did you ask?
No, we did.
You did say, okay. Those, right. Okay, well, the situation was very standard. So it wouldn't affect the majority of the. A lot of the word is, that's. There's a, like, the majority is only council. Too many of them, yes, approved. Yeah, I'm willing to put this. These parties contain the cause number twenty fourteen, these available, zero zero eight one B deals at all, person, they are grounded. One hundred third judicial court of Texas, authorizing the mayor and city manager excellent settlement agreement, providing severability clause established. Make a motion to approve this twenty twenty three dash oh two litigation of the time.
Senator Romero?
I'm not sure that I don't have concerns about this part of state.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember DeKalbale?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Come number eleven, we did a resolution twenty three oh eight, consideration possible action, we did resolution twenty twenty three oh six, authorizing the submission of their next community development grant program application. The doctoring required C D B G civil rights policy.
So this is the resolution when, this is for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, fifty fifty grant, we approved it last about a month. When we got the survey back, only two block qualified for the L M I, the whole monitor income. So we're having to narrow down scope of the project. And unfortunately, we're just going to run into this more and more. We're just not, we're just not going to qualify for it. So we're sending one that could last week because it had a three three and that's pretending the next market and I will.
House number Gonzalez, made a motion, mayor, for a second. With a decision of resolution point three oh eight.
Councilmember Romero?
This, I'm sorry, it is, this revolution is number oh eight, we're rescinding. I'm sorry. We're, we're proving away, yeah, which is a fix, should have the.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
On the take a bail?
Yes.
And Carter?
Yes. And then twelve, resolution twenty twenty three oh nine, considering off the lack of operating. Fix you the block program. And not the required T V D civil rights policy and rescinding for in this.
So this will be adopting the civil rights policy last month, but this is going to be the project of Saunders Street between the town, Taylor and the. So that will be the small area that's qualified. Yes. And otherwise, it's simply the things came up on it.
Not made by. Considerers of last not heard.
Councilmember Romero?
Yeah.
Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember DeKalbale? Mayor Carter?
Yes.
And I'm sure the resolution point three three dash quarter, consideration possible action authorized. The, the ability to please do submit grant application number three one. The operation. For your properties. Not always. When we sit down and maybe even vote it out, we thought, buddy, look out, but. You know, we do, but I was in the here, the program, or there, I was on takeoff. Making a motion to approve resolution point. I've moved by a row, row narrow.
Councilmember Romero? Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember DeKalbale? Mayor Carter?
Yes. And what we call.
And the first travel request is from D V Alphusor, and she invites you to backflow prevention assembly center force. It'll be in Round Rock, Texas, and she wants to be twelve to two sixteen. So the. Total cost is five hundred and sixty dollars. I'm sorry, the total cost of two thousand forty three dollars, but she has that in the budget.
And it's how the city.
So she can give, do you want to talk to the backflow inspection?
Yeah, it's. I, in order to get my, right now, we're contracting inspector from the island to do all the plumbing inspections. Um, in order for me to get my plumber's inspector license, I have to have an endorsement or a supply. And I had to have so many hours of following him around. And I exceeded those hours. Now I'm instructed to go to the class and, and, and have the, get the three words, right, we said, done, training. So that will take you, yeah, plumber inspector exam. So that way you don't have to contact to get one.
Nice.
Oh, yeah.
You don't have to do some.
So me is the power charge for. I know in my conference, right? The further training that we do on the accounting software that we use. So the one who's on to follow up my third year and it will be stressful that eight years ago.
The M I P, that's the name of this account.
Yeah, it's not an acronym, it's just called M I.
I know, I just saw on talking.
I know, and I. It's, it's not. I mean, it might, it might, but yeah, it's the name of the actual.
Is the, what's the?
Oh, I'm sorry, the total, the total trip. Oh, I'm sorry, the total, the total trip per person is two thousand five sixty-eight, and then for both of us, it'll be five thousand one thousand. This is in the not that you have budgeted enough as a travel. I think it's in October, August, October tenth, twenty-four.
Questions? And put the money down, so. No, okay. Confiscation. What if I? I'll say. Um, mostly by. To prove the travel.
Councilmember Romero?
Yeah.
Councilmember Gonzalez? Who wants to for DeGale? Mayor Carter?
Fifteen overlay district workshop. Bottom block, great workshop, that's never really did. I believe we don't.
So I just wanted to uh pitch the idea of scheduling a workshop, which I can't get um your direction for me in this room, and if you develop overlay uh district ordinance. Uh, from previous administrations, I have kind of noted what was said, uh, but I'd really like to get the current um county direction, um, we've got the different things that go on in the overlay district. So I was thinking a workshop would be beneficial, I'd like to do this sooner rather than later, because I don't want it to. Our business start coming in, and we don't have anything that we, and you know, I don't want them grandfathered in. Well, we didn't have it then, so we kind of hold this to it now, so um I think it's too big of a threat to try to uh queue on in the council meetings. And so I thought we could go maybe three days out that would work, and then I can check with the council members that are here, if if that's something you would amenable uh to. Because the next step was. Let's.
Yeah, I mean, I think you don't need to do it here right now, because. People aren't here right now.
Okay.
So. Yeah, hold everybody and try to. You know. You better try to order, because I would like everyone to be there, that would be, especially, Mr. Howard, want to brought this to the table to begin with, so.
Okay, so, um, so we can do the workshop, ultimately allow, and they just throw out some deep, we'll just try to pinpoint everybody in. Okay. Then, yes.
Under sixteen, personal policy, discussion possible action to approve the override for personal policy. I want to ask. I was not able to get any more of the council for you, the final. Probably, but I was comfortable, because I didn't. I apologize, pardon my my office's uh issue, not having to do it. If. Please like that, can't we move this to another max? Everybody has a chance, there there are a lot of sort of. Well, it's been a long time since we discussed last, things are added to it, I just. Thank you. No action. Number thirteen, executive session. Executive possession of order, the court being that was authorized to take a certain approach regarding any matters of. Six five five one point oh seven one, population, town attorney, and pending litigation. Liberation, great, go properly, right, question. Liberation regarding personnel matters, and five five one point oh eight seven deliberate regarding that product development. Now, ten. You want to have it? Looking at under the attorney consultation, you guys. All the all the account. I make a motion to do this. I want to be by, may I, first, I can invite council member, DeGale. In the session.
Councilmember Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember DeGale?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Okay, we're back in session, I mean, that is, at seven fifty. There's no access to be taken on the second session. Uh, number nineteen, the manager report.
Um, unless you guys have a specific question, I'm pretty sure I, of course, you can touch that on the period, is it the? So, um, because they think, you know, department stats are are raised, we have, you might have some questions around. Tell the pictures of the. You know, that we don't, or the sort of.
Have a personal library.
Hey.
How many people does the one that people be nice?
They're here to answer them. Oh, exactly, okay, I believe the average, uh, seven to twelve, um, that is kids and parents, so you know, you have. Two children and, you know, and as a mom, and so I I I believe it's around seven, twelve, average on. The Lego night is the most popular, I think that one has, that it that show up.
Moving night? To people. The movie started at five, those won't be.
Oh. Um. And how how often are we having stuff at the library?
So she has that weekly, well, actually twice a week, so she has Wednesday night, have something every, every night, Wednesday, she has a matter. She'll have about, I guess it's about five events, she shall have a craft night, a month, a craft night, one uh, movie night, the Lego night. And a game night, yeah, so it's once a week, we have something kind of specific in connection with um the. Yes, it's only.
Yeah.
Of it. Of the kind of weeks that. Not four or five of them at the library.
Three other questions? Amen. No?
Thank you. That's really told.
No, I just tried to be.
I'm going to say.
For the. Prefer all being good. What you're doing? Motion to like, yes. Motion to.
No, don't try to.
Hi, Briar, dear pleasure.
Senator Romero? Gonzalez? Councilmember DeGale? Mayor Carter?
Yes. Thanks, guys. Yeah.